Madam President, citizens of Winter Garden.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. I'm Noreen Dworkin. I am the editor-in-chief of the nonprofit news site Box Populi. And my question tonight is, is there going to be an investigation of Mayor Reese's violations of the city charter since he has been in office? This commission has been very occupied in prosecution of Commissioner Mueller for alleged violations, and I want to know if the commission is going to give equal attention to the actual violations of the mayor. The charter states that the mayor shall do three things, and that word is "shall." Preside over the meetings, represent the city in intergovernmental relationships, and present an annual State of the City message. I asked the mayor directly when the last time he gave a State of the City message, and he said never. Please let me say that again. In the entire time that Mayor Reese has been in office, he has never shared a State of the City message with the people of Winter Garden. I checked this with public records, but when I asked the mayor directly, he said that he has never shared a message with the city of Winter Garden. And it's not going to matter how the city attorney spins this. He has never shared a message, and that is in the city charter. It is there for a reason. Now, I double-checked. I spoke with Box Populi's legal expert, and this is not some random attorney that I pulled off the street. This is somebody who represented the city of Winter Garden before Mr. Arteman was able to take over representation. And this is the founding member of the law firm that this city has hired to prosecute Commissioner Mueller. And what he told me was that when you are not doing the things that the city charter stipulates, you are breaking the law that you have sworn to uphold when you assume office. Now, this attorney told me, when I spoke with them, he used words like "mouthpieces" and "recall election." Now, I don't think that people are going to get very exercised over the fact that they missed out on a State of the City message. But what I get exercised over, what I get very exercised over, is the potential for inequity and unfairness and hypocrisy. This commission has spent an awful lot of time and resources pursuing a commissioner for alleged violations, and what we have here are actual violations of the city charter. And what I want to know is, does the city charter apply to everyone? Does the city charter apply to the mayor? Or is it just for us to follow? I want to know if the mayor considers himself above the law. Does the mayor consider that he is bound by the city charter? And I'm going to ask for an answer on that.
Have you ever seen a video that I showed you, Noreen?
It doesn't matter if the mayor spoke for a couple of minutes to Box Five.
It says "State of the City."
It may say "The State of the City," but not everybody wants it in Box Five.
This is nice, John. Time's up. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
No, I'm going to wait for an answer because I think that there are people here who would like to know.
Excuse me, your time is up.
I don't even think so.
We gave you another minute.
You are a public servant, and you owe the people of Winter Garden an answer.
Next person to like to speak may come up and speak.
I will.
I think that there are people here who would like to know if you consider yourself above the law.
Let me step in. Mayor, I'm going to address the matter under my report. But this is not a time for question and answers.
No, it's not. She didn't do it. No, but I do think that, while I didn't have knowledge of this, I think it's a valid point. I'm not saying that you...
Let the city attorney, he wants to address it. Let him.
Well, it is appropriate time, and I'm going to use the floor for myself at the moment. Thank you.
No, this is not your turn.
Well, then, I will use the floor.
When you can.
I very well hope so.
Okay.
Okay, I'll give the floor to Ms. Wolf.
Yeah, Ms. Wolf, okay.
Sarah Wolf, I desire to do one more voice to the meeting mayor and commissioners. So, this is pretty, I don't know if I want to say alarming or interesting. Neither of those words mean that it's great. Now, I know that there's a city charter, and that all the commissioners and the mayor have to abide by that because they took an oath to follow it. So, if that city charter hasn't been followed for 12 years, is that right, Mayor? You've been mayor for 12 years?
Sam, I've been here since '86.
You've been mayor since '86?
Yeah, I've been on the commission since '86.
But you haven't been mayor...
Go ahead and finish your comments.
Thank you. You haven't been mayor for that long. Talk about having to give a State of the City speech every year for 12 years. You've been mayor for 12 years. I find that alarming. And now that we hear as an aside that there was a video taken on a meeting somewhere that as a resident I never knew anything about, that now, Mr. Attorney, I'm speaking at you because I think you can guide me on this to understand, help me understand, that that video takes the place of this State of the City address. If you're prepared to answer that now, that would be great. I don't need an answer right now, but if that's so, just tell me.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I'm not. No, thank you for listening. And I have a positive thing to say to Mr. Arteman. I want to congratulate you on reading all of those ordinance. That was a mouthful, and thank you very much, and I hope you never have to do that again. It's your job. Thank you for listening to me. And is there a time limit for these questions?
Three minutes.
It's not questions, it's comments.
Comments, three minutes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, please, I think it's serious. Thank you.
Anyone else? Madam, or city attorney?
Yes, Mayor, I have to address the concern. Typically, you know, the public comment's not a time for question and answers. But Mr. Dworkin had made this allegation previously, and the city manager asked me to look at it, so I did. And this is clearly, this is not something that's under the prohibited portions of the charter for which the city commission is the judge. This is, there's a separate section that Commissioner Mueller's involved in. This is a question about interpretation of this particular part of the charter. Excuse me. So, I did look at it. I actually asked one of my associates to review it. I read the memorandum. I mean, I had to prepare a memorandum, and the assertion was that the mayor has violated Article Roman II, Section 11, Subsection 3 of the Winter Garden Charter for failing to deliver an annual State of the City address, it was a message, address, to the citizens of Winter Garden. So, we looked at the actual language, and I think Mr. Dworkin did quote it properly in her statement tonight, but not previously. And the charter actually says, "The mayor, Commissioner, shall preside as chairperson of meetings of the commission, represent the city in intergovernmental relationships, and present an annual State of the City message." That's what it says. Shall present an annual State of the City message. It doesn't say special address. It doesn't define how the mayor is supposed to do that. It doesn't get into what that actually means. So, we analyzed that. We did some research with respect to it. It doesn't define State of the City message. Our charter doesn't do that. It does not define the word "present," what does it mean to present that message? It does not, the charter does not dictate how, to whom, or in what context the State of the City message is to be presented. In addition, there is no charter requirement. There's no guideline. There is no specification as to what the message is to contain or the format of the message. When a term in a charter is used, and there is no definition, you can look at different definitions. And so, we did look at those different definitions. And bottom line is, how do you, you know, there's a whole lot of interpretations people can give to what was "present," to whom, to where, and when, and what is the message? So, I asked the city manager to get me what he was aware of, what the mayor actually did, and whether the mayor considered giving a presenting the Annual State of the City message or not. The actual fact scene is absolutely clear that he goes far above and beyond what that means or what that requires. Twice a year, the mayor sends out a bulletin, once in the fall and winter, and once in the spring and summer. And the mayor's bulletins highlight the city's recent accomplishments and actions. And these flyers go out throughout the city. It's not to select people that want to come to a city commission meeting. It's not at some called meeting in the street or in an auditorium. This goes out to all the citizens of Winter Garden. And so, we read, we read the fall/winter 2023 and the other, the more recent ones, the spring/summer 2023. And what it does, it highlights the city's recent accomplishments and actions, events available to and affecting the citizens of Winter Garden, anticipated endeavors, events, and expectations of the city. For example, the one in 2023 for the fall/winter bulletin said, it actually explores past and current issues from that year, including a new campaign, "Slow Down Winter Garden," intended to encourage voters to drive at a safe speed through neighborhoods and city streets. The spring/summer 2023 bulletin, the second bulletin, discussed the celebration of Winter Garden's 120th anniversary, as well as explaining how new fertilizer ordinance will positively affect the city's rivers lakes and springs. Both bulletins expound upon the city's commitment to sustainability, public safety, wellness, and recreation. Additionally, the bulletins highlight new programs and activities, and look ahead at upcoming seasonal events. The mayor has also participated in West Dor's Chamber of Commerce, stayed in West Dor's County Luncheon, and other things. I participate in the actual budget where he chairs the meeting. The commission adopts that budget from a fiscal standpoint. So, when you look at it, and we did not do an exhaustive look, but we got what we could from the city manager recently, and at the end of the day, it looks like that the mayor has gone far beyond what his duty would be under that particular provision to deliver an annual State of the City message to the citizens of Winter Garden by communicating in abundant detail the city's progress, its current city conditions, the city's accomplishments and future plans through various channels. There's some cases that we actually found, and it makes clear that the mayor and the city commission have persuasive authority to determine what is required for the mayor's presentation of State of the City message. So, if the commission thinks that there's something more that the mayor needs to do, the commission can give that direction. But based on what I've seen, I see that it's an inappropriate accusation. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. What else did you have, sir?
Yes, I also have a second item, Mayor. With respect to the hearing that the commission has called for with respect to Commissioner Mueller, in your packet, there were some suggested rules and guidelines for a hearing, and we'll talk about those. But I also have an alternative that I discussed with Commissioner Mueller as well. But the first question, I think, is important for all, and that is whether there is one, two, or three charges that the commission intends to evaluate whether Commissioner Mueller violated the charter.
I'm going to make a point of order to the chair. So, it would be inappropriate for the city attorney to really speak on this matter at this point, lack of due process. I do not retain counsel yet. He's aware that I have retained counsel, so any conversation related to you, the counsel or any agreement, or how we should proceed without me having counsel is breach of my process here. I think it would be appropriate until I have counsel representing, then we can discuss this matter.
Yeah, I need direction from the mayor and commissioner, the commission, as to how to proceed from here. And so, Commissioner Mueller, I think, has made a point, and that in fact is a single charge that was made in the motion, and there was discussion during that hearing, that decision, not near the commission meeting, about what the charge was. And my question is whether it is specific to that motion, which is unclear because the minutes seem to say it's, could be, to the other ones.
I'd like a ruling on my point of order first.
I'm happy to.
Yeah. What say you, Kurt?
Well, I need direction, and I think the commission, I mean, if the commission wants to have a fair hearing, the Commissioner Mueller wants to have a fair hearing, I think he needs to know, and the commission needs to know, what expressly, what provisions of the charter is the commission considering that Commissioner Mueller may have violated?
Yeah.
So, I mean, we can say, oh, we're not going to talk about that, but I don't know how to proceed with a hearing of the ones.
Well, I'm the one that made the motion, and I know the timing was questioned with the election, but it was really the public records request that was a few months back that brought to light the possible violations of our charter. And if I need to amend my motion to include 14-1 and 14-2, the whole point is, we did take an oath to uphold our charter and to office. We have a duty sharing responsibility, and I don't believe we can pick and choose which amendments or numbers that we uphold. We either uphold our charter, or it's not any good.
Again, unfortunately, I object to this conversation should not be occurring without due process. It is a violation of due process. You don't have a representation.
The commission has an obligation to determine exactly how it was to proceed, and it's chosen to proceed. The question is, what are the charges? And based on my reading of the minutes, it looks like it's all three, because that's what the motion was, based on the minutes. So, if the commission does not want to proceed down that path, then I need direction in order to be able to counsel the commission about how to proceed.
Well, the minutes are approved in section 14.
That's exactly right. So, it was, I think, said subsection 14.2, but there was discussion, it really was 14-1. So, I don't...
Oh, okay.
Ron, do you think, we're not arguing the case. I agree.
No, you need to be represented. I don't think we're arguing whether, you know, it happened or didn't happen at this point. We're just talking about the charges that were in the minutes. I mean, you need representation for that. I mean, and if we did, say, let's say we did move forward with it, because I was under the impression it was, you know, and it was in the minutes that it was all three. But if we did determine that today, once you retain counsel or if you counsel, you could fight it then. I mean, is that true, Kurt? I don't have a charging vote.
Oh, sure.
I think we just need a decision today, just so we can get this thing behind us.
And again, and I thank you for that. Again, I challenge you, this is a breach of due process because I did not have counsel yet to know any of these things. We're laypeople here and relying on someone who's representing the city and who is, you know, working with the prosecution side, so it's...
But if you got counsel, what do you want to know?
I'll let the council talk to the city attorney to figure out that, that it's not like, I'm not an expert.
I'm not either. I don't know. If he's giving you 21 thing, and it's really three, then that's putting your attorney behind the eight ball, and then...
I would think that...
I would look to your attorney to figure that out. I'm going to get to that.
I think I need direction, and I think it's appropriate for the commission to consider and give direction, whether it should be 14.1 or the two items under 14.2 of the charter. You know, if there's delay needed by Commissioner Mueller, if he gets counsel for a hearing to deal with those, I think that that's something the commission can consider. I mean, the commission directed the hearing, I think, be sometime in January. You can push that back if Commissioner Mueller, or if he gets counsel, thinks there needs to be some delay in that. But, I mean, the commission is in control of this. The charter gives the commission full authority to be the judge of the qualifications. You're the one under the charter, the only body on earth that can make these decisions. So, the commission chose to move forward with a hearing. If you don't want to move forward with a hearing, you can say, hey, stop, we don't want to do it. If you still want to move forward with a hearing, under a particular section of the charter, or two, or three, these three that are in the draft, it's in your packet, then just, I think, you need to make it clear as to what that's going to be.
Okay. We should go, Mayor.
I thought it was clear, and it was in the minutes, and the minutes were adopted, and it should be on three, 14-1 and 14-2. If we have violations, we have violations.
So, you need clarification, again, tonight on that one question?
Well, it would be helpful. I don't think we have a meeting until January.
Okay.
We have a meeting until January, so I'd like, that's number one. Whether it's one, two, or three, or two out of those three, whatever the commission is, I mean, I can read them, or in the city packet, so you'll see them. So, how the commission wishes to proceed.
Was that in form of motion?
Yes.
Okay, if you had a motion, do we have a second?
What was the motion, sorry?
That it's as stated in the, well, it's one, two, it's all three. Any violations...
14-1 and the two provisions under 14-2, as I've laid out in the proposed guidelines. Okay.
Okay. Do we have a second to that?
I'll second. Ron, yeah, you just, you need to get an attorney, right? You get your attorney. If you don't agree with all three, then let's just move this, to get the attorney and fight. If you don't agree, think it's all three, then have your attorney present that it's not. We just have to make a decision whether to move forward with this thing or not, and whether it's one or three, let your attorney fight it. Get your attorney in here.
Okay.
You have a moment?
We have a motion, discussion. We have a motion, and a second, and discussion.
Again, a violation of my due process here. I don't believe that this motion or this conversation was appropriate. It's not representative.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and the other discussion.
So, Kurt, we're just trying to figure out what, which charter provisions.
That's correct.
That's all.
That's right. So, if you vote yes to the motion, it would be the three items listed on the first page of that draft. If you vote no, then it would be some portion of those, I presume, or none. I think Ron voted, I guess, I guess it's 4-1, though.
Correct. Okay. Okay. So, we have motion, we have a second. I would favor saying, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Unfortunately, I object to due process.
Okay.
So, the second question is, the guidelines that I had presented to John, who put it in the packet, is, it provides for the city to obtain a presenting attorney, present the case for the city, and for Commissioner Mueller to have an attorney. But Commissioner Mueller does not have counsel, and the expense of hiring a separate attorney to present a case to me creates some issues as well. I've got some revised guidelines that I intend to give to you, which tracks pretty much exactly what I said before, except it provides for no presenting or prosecuting attorney. All it provides is that, and the thought would be that some of the, you've got one of the emails and documents can be presented to the commission, and Commissioner Mueller either alone, or if he has counsel, he'll be able to defend himself, but he would not be a presenting or prosecuting attorney. I would serve as the commission's attorney, not as an advocate, a for or against Commissioner Mueller or for the commission. But it would be, I think, an opportunity to avoid the more stilted, formal presentation, presenting of witnesses, cross-examination, and the like. So, the rules I've just handed to you allow for a hearing, but without having a prosecuting or presenting attorney. And I think that would probably be more to what I think I'm hearing with the commission might want based on this discussion. I'm going to talk to John. John liked that idea, but I talked to Commissioner Mueller about it. I think he liked it, but wanted to reserve his rights to object if and when he gets counsel. So, it's really up to you. But if we're going to have a hearing in January, I think it should be late January because it's going to be tough for things to occur between now and early January. It's clearly not my call, it's the commission's call. But if you want to take some time to look at the these draft minutes, the essence of it is that the commission would have, the city would have no presenting prosecuting attorney. Commissioner Mueller can get his counsel if he likes, or not, as well. It would be a more informal process, and I think that would be consistent with the comments I've received from John.
Again, I'm sure my objection, again, just a violation of due process, if I'm going to get an attorney before I can actually more disagree with any of these things.
So, this is interesting because due process is a big part of our law in our country. And I mean, if his attorney gave him advice, I would be willing to consider whatever argument that came before us, and then change based on our judgment of his attorney's argument. Because we haven't heard that. We need to keep ourselves open to all sides. But we don't know what that is, because he doesn't have one yet, but I think we need to try to move forward, but leave ourselves open to make a change should we get new evidence or correction, or an argument that we deem as something that we need to make a change.
And I'd go a step further than that. If they argued that it was only one charge and not three, I'd want to hear that argument also, you know, just like, Mr. Shaw, it's just, you know, three charges are in the minutes. If that's what it is, let's move, let's just get this done, but let's hear the arguments. I want to hear the arguments. So, Kurt, if I understand this correctly, maybe, and I'm sorry, maybe I wasn't, I was looking at the document and not listening close enough, but so where, the commission is not going to have a prosecution?
It's up to you all. The commission gets to decide. The rules that I sent to John originally provided for one.
Right, that's what I...
But after I had further discussions with John and Commissioner Mueller, it seemed to me that one was an additional expense to the city, and also, it would, it formalizes it more than, and I don't think the commission wants that formal of a proceeding. The key is that Commissioner Mueller is due and must be provided due process, and the commission, process, must be offered due process. So, it's not just for Commissioner Mueller, it's from the entire commission to have that. So, that's what I am attempting to do, is to provide some guidelines to give the best possible, I mean, best possible fair treatment to Commissioner Mueller and to the commission to allow this to be decided in the fairest way possible.
But I don't feel we're qualified. That's why I always, when we said, talking about getting a prosecution, an attorney to represent us, I don't feel qualified to execute this.
Well, but, I mean, so, and that's why, I mean, you can...
Okay, so, we don't make that decision tonight?
No, you don't have to.
No, this would be nonviolent anyway, and if Ron got an attorney who wanted to change it, then, you know, that's fine. Right, as far as my concerns, so, yes.
So, I think that at the next meeting in Jan, if the commission intends to move forward, at this point, with a hearing in January, it should be late January so that we can have a discussion about how do you want to proceed, what the guidelines and rules would be. And we could throw out the rules and just have a hearing. But I think that just creates more chaos and problems than having some guidelines for the commission, Commissioner Mueller to consider and follow.
Okay. So, we need new action, actually, on this issue?
No, no action at this point, please. Everybody's got a copy. I think everybody got a copy of what I said. If you need it, my email, let me know, I'll send it. And, but, well, I think the commission should make a call in early January on how to proceed on it.
Correct. Okay. Anything else, sir?
Um, no, I probably got a lot more, but come in now, Mayor. Thanks.
You go ahead. Okay. Our acting city manager is a dyke, Mr. Stee.
I would just like to thank Seth and the city commission for all the work they've done throughout the year, and wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's the city manager?
Yeah. I like the city manager.
Yeah. Tom John, yeah.
Commissioner Sharman.
I've been a long one. I believe we got to present all the information. That's why we need to give Commissioner Mueller his side. Noreen, I think you should also present all the information, share the video with you. Just because it didn't meet your opinion of what that was, you should still say that it was presented to you. But I think everyone will be ready to have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah. Got a couple more nights, I think?
Yeah.
Thursday was the...
Tomorrow.
Yeah. See you guys next year.
Commissioner Meschel.
Yes, I just want to say, I'm sorry to the city that we have to go through this, and it's not fun for anybody, especially for Commissioner Mueller, and we want to hear and we want to hear all facts, and that's, that's really where I stand with this. I want to thank Kurt for the explanation about the mayor's obligations to the city that was very, very helpful, and I greatly appreciated that. I, one of the things I do like about the mayor, he's not a, he's not a grandstander, he's a man of few words and all business, and he's not looking for opportunities to stand in front and public speak all the time, and I kind of like that, and he does his job well, and I appreciate it.
I'm in favor of making him do that, though. I have the video, I'm in favor of doing that every year.
Please do.
So, but that's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Mueller?
Well, you know, this is a big, I think, first, and certainly I have enormous respect for the mayor, as I have said publicly many, many times, he is the moral sinner of our community. I know he didn't want me to say that, but, but he is, and he is much good that comes out of that. That said, I, I think Mr. Workin brought up a point that is concerning to me in the sense that, because I've read the article before, that despite the city attorney's findings or arguments in that, if, as I've said, the mayor said, no, I never did it, I have to take the mayor's word if he has it, I would say.
Google offense?
I think so. But nonetheless, I, I think that, you know, if, as Commissioner Bennett just said, that we have to hold the charter all, not in part, then, you know, she makes a very good argument that we do have to hold all ourselves accountable for it, so we really should work towards making sure that happens. So I'll let that go with the way. Couple other things on my list, we talked a little bit about bringing in one property tonight that was agricultural in the county, it's been, now, art of one, much happy to see that before, from the first reading. I have talked to the city manager a couple times, and I think I brought up this board, but I am looking to see if we can create an agricultural zoning within an urban area, it's not unheard of, but there are several residents that live in and around Winter Garden who would benefit from coming into the city if they could maintain their agricultural and tax benefits. So it would, it would, you would essentially just really adopt the A1 standard, the agricultural standard of the county, in the, in the Winter Garden, that will be discussed, but I just wanted, an awareness that that's kind of there, certainly, and Commissioner Sharmen and I have quite a few properties out in that area that would, that would fall under all of that. Beyond that, just echo a few other things, I want to thank city staff for absolutely tremendous year. It was, it was great from, from working on budgets, thank you for the literally two-hundred-and-seventy-page budget that I got to read, thank you, I'm kidding. But just to all the great events, we just, again, we create all these Norman Rockwell or Hallmark moments throughout the city, and we have a great community because we have, again, a staff of four hundred people that serves over fifty-one thousand, and they work very hard and very diligently to give us a great time and keep us safe. So thank you from that point, appreciate that. Despite our conversation tonight, to my fellow commissioners, the mayor, and all up here, I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and the happiest of New Years, and certainly to the citizens of Winter Garden as we get into the holiday season, thank you for always believing in our community, for attending. I know this is not always the exciting meetings, but, you know, we do this for you, all of us do, and so we thank you for that. And then just globally, you know, I certainly pray for our folks in Ukraine and hope that we and our allies continue to support the Ukrainian people, and then lastly, certainly, I hope the hostages, both Israel and Palestine, come home safely to their families. I pray for peace on both sides, maybe find that in a really horrific situation, but let them find peace and let their families come home. Thank you.
Commissioner Bennett?
Kurt, recently too, from some people who are interested in annexing, would want to keep their ag zoning, and I don't know how that, you know, how that works, but just wanted to share that as well. And I echo, you know what, Colin's remarks, Mark's remarks, and I want to thank the staff for all your hard work, especially during the holidays, and wish you all a very Merry Christmas. That's it.
We'll give everything on a positive note, it's like the song, Count Your Blessings, count them one by one, the counting blessings, you see what God hath done, and we are blessed and privileged to live what we do, to what goes on in this world. I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and a Happy Hanukkah. So with that, we will adjourn.